The City of San Juan Bautista City Council's special meeting of Thursday, November 5th, 2020 is in session. Um, pledge allegiance, Vice Mayor Jordan, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember DeFreeze? Councilmember Freeman?
Is anybody muted?
Um, call stuff there.
They're all frozen.
She says we have no audio.
They're all frozen.
Okay.
And when we were doing the pledge, it was you guys sitting at the dais.
Oh, Wes?
Oh, wow.
Yes, so it was prior to us doing the pledge.
Okay.
Um, we froze? So what do we do?
Uh, Sasar just moved. Sasar's moving?
No, he's not.
You see, as Johnny's too.
Oh, okay.
I just, I just took this off mute, but it still says mute.
You're, you're seeing a different screen. We're still frozen up on those, the wall.
John's moving.
There's John. Okay.
Okay, we're doing roll call? We're doing roll call?
What?
I'll be down there in about an hour and a half.
Oh, Lord. Okay.
Councilmember DeFreeze? Um, councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Is councilmember DeFreeze out there?
Yes, here.
Okay, thank you. We have a forum.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we go on to, um, public comment, only on items that are on the agenda, and you have three minutes. Is there anybody that wants to have a public comment?
Did you do a pledge?
Yes, yes, we did. You guys were frozen.
We all missed, Caesar, I didn't hear it either.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. The screen froze up on us, and it's still messing around with me.
We were having technical difficulties. Sorry that you missed the pledge of allegiance. We're on, uh, the public comment.
Now my mouse doesn't move.
Do we have anybody?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so it looks like we don't have anybody, so we go on to, uh, item number three, discussion items. Item 3A fiscal year 2020-21. Am I too loud? Why am I getting feedback? Hold on.
I'm not sure.
Fiscal year, uh, 2021 budget workshop. Review, consider, and provide direction to staff regarding the recommended budget. Approval of final budget, November 17th, 2020.
All right, I am having technical difficulties.
If you can hear me, we're having technical difficulties. We're sorry.
I, I can't.
Hopefully you can hear us.
I don't know if that screen is. I can't see my mouse, but it appears to be doing things.
That is so weird. We never, it, it seems like it's always something different.
I know. See, the screen is on the...
Uh-huh.
I'm just going to, uh, like, undo this.
Good, I'm glad.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. Uh, gallery view. Okay, that's what we need. Okay. Now I can just plug this in again. This cable comes loose on me, and that's, might be part of the problem.
Okay, so can everybody hear now? Okay.
Okay, thank you. We had to redo that. Okay.
All right.
Very good. And, one, two, three, and there it is. And, gotta move that over. Nope. Okay. There you go. There's my ribbon. Okay, now I can move it over. There it is. Okay. Okay.
We are not seeing that.
I know.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, no worries. Should we send him on the slide up here? Should he have the camera on the slides?
Yes.
Is there this flame there?
Yeah, yeah.
When, when we get on?
Yeah. And what was your name again, everyone?
I'm Mason.
Mason. Mason, Mason.
This is frustrating. I can't see my mouse. Maybe my fingers are too greasy. I'm too Italian. Does that help any? Why am I stuck over here? There it is, there it is. Screen chair. Okay, that one. Share. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, that works?
We have ignition. Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
I had this mic on.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That mic's on there. Okay, very good. Okay, so I have about nine slides tonight. Thank you for your patience. I'm sorry, it's 11 slides, and it's just an overview of what we presented, uh, a few weeks ago to the city council. The budget has not changed, um, and we will do a little bit of the online, uh, exercise to, to help people understand how they can go and find answers to their questions. If we don't answer the questions tonight, there'll be opportunity before we bring the budget back for adoption on the 17th. So, uh, the first few slides are an overview of, uh, the last fiscal year and, and what I'm proposing for the city this year, and then, uh, then we'll go in and we'll explore some of the information that's online, uh, at ClearGov, and then, uh, the last few slides are about the capital improvement budget, and then with that, we'd be happy to take questions and, uh, and have a discussion about the budget. So with that, we'll just move forward. Um, basically, uh, we're in a situation where this is a great time to be planning, uh, to be planning until, uh, uh, a time that our services and capital improvements can grow. Um, we've spent a year adopting to extreme conditions and never seen before in our lifetime, but soon we will be able to, uh, break out of this, uh, this freeze that we're in and, and, uh, and begin to grow again, because that's what I'm going to share with you here. Um, our 1920 budget saw the general fund, uh, revenue decrease 54%, mostly in the sales tax. However, we were able to save, uh, about $165,000 in general fund, uh, spending 9.2% less than budgeted. Uh, we restructured the organization to respond to the state of emergency. We completed an organizational study of strategic planning, and we transitioned to a transparent budget platform. We completed a $1.4 million street improvement project. We completed our water and wastewater master plans, our pavement management plan. Uh, we pretty much completed, well, five and six, and the filtration plant there, and we wrapped up the copper leaf development and about 95% of the Rancho Vista development. So it was a busy year, uh, with the, uh, state of emergency starting in March and trying to understand how that would impact the city, and we hung in there. We, we did, I think, a pretty good job holding it together. And this is some of the impacts reflected in our 2021 budget. Uh, we've reduced expenses to meet reduced revenues. So our general fund revenue in 1819 grew $169,000 in 1920. Um, so it went from $1.8 million to almost $2 million, a 9.3% increase, and it looked like we were on a pattern to continue that growth until the COVID came. And so our 2021 budget shows $175,000 decrease back to that level from 1819 of about $1.8 million. So all in all, you've got an 18.1% swing, um, and a, and a minus $244,000 back to our 1819 status. So instead of talking about new programs and new positions and expanding services, uh, we're talking about cutting back to that 1819 level, that 1819 status. So I've prepared a budget that is conservative in its, in its expenses, and I'm recommending that we remain conservative until a recovery is certain. So, um, we're not there yet, obviously. Uh, we've reduced staff in this budget from approved 13.5 positions in, uh, 1920 to 2.5 positions with no deputy city manager position. There were no cost of living or salary increases recommended, except for the merit increases that the employees are able to earn if they're still within the range.
Time out. Record, sorry. Hit the record button.
Oh, on the Zoom?
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, oh, I'm pausing here. Hit the record button on the Zoom.
That's the message I just got.
Connecting to audio.
So I need to stop sharing my screen to, to do that?
No, they said we don't. I did it, it never does that.
There it is. What does that say?
Uh... Does that say record on it?
Oh, no, that's, um... Hold on, everybody? Gee, I was...
Sorry. Well, thi- this is being recorded. Let's see now, and Tish is recording.
When I set it up, I usually set it up, is it automatic? I got a text that we were not recording.
Huh.
Okay, carry on.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So...
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Um, okay, so, um...
Sorry.
So, um, we are using, uh, the new platform to increase transparency. It provides good summaries and graphics of, by various fund types. The most familiar fund, of course, is the general fund. Most of our services are found, uh, under the general fund. Um, the enterprise funds have their own budget, so the water and sewer programs, for example, have their own, uh, expense and revenue budgets in the, in the document. Um, we were unable to use, uh, ClearGov this year for the CIP, and I can, uh, bring you on a, on a quick tour of that again, like we did in the past. Um, let's see, I need to go back over here.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Let's see, is that Kara's? That's the...
Can she be muted?
Yeah, it's Kara, okay. And I'm going to share the screen this time. I'm going to take you to this one. Okay. And we want to get ClearGov over here. Okay, is ClearGov on your screen, Leslie?
Good.
Uh, on your screen?
No, I don't have the, I don't have that page. I have Zoom, phone is expanding your reach. I have that screen.
Yeah, that's what she has.
You have that screen. Okay, stop sharing. Share screen. Oh, that's because I hit the wrong one. There we go. Okay, okay, there we go. So, um, under the introduction, we have the transmittal letters, the same as I shared with you, um, um, two weeks ago, and if you give it a minute to load, it'll load up. So this talks about basically the same things I've reiterated in the slides. I've just summarized all these statements, so if you'd like more detail about our budget, there it is, it's online. Um, also in the introduction is something that was requested last time, and that is our organizational chart. And this shows that the community is in charge of our city, uh, and then volunteers, of course, and city council. Um, it shows, uh, the economic development effort that's added under the city manager that is, uh, part of our adjustment to COVID, that we're trying to incorporate into our budget, recommending incorporating, uh, this full-time position with economic development. That's our community liaison. And then over here, we have our planning commission, our appointed body, by the city council. Under that, we have community development. Uh, we have a, a part-time provisional appointment there, Marty, um, and then, and then we have the contract services, David beneath that. Um, our, our building official remains as Greg Johnson in Foreleaf. We have Minnie's done a great job as our permit technician, and, uh, code enforcement is partly under the building official at, at, uh, at, uh, two-thirds of the position. The other third of code enforcement is over here in law enforcement. Um, we're looking at changing the job description and, uh, expanding it. Um, I'm finding that the title of public safety manager is a fitting title. Uh, he's working to bring forward to us status reports from the police and fire department. Um, and he's been doing, I think, a good job coordinating with our private security as well. So, um, that was, that is the recommendation of transitioning, uh, our code enforcement officer from a 20-hour per week... 20-hour per week to, uh, 20-hour per week to a 30-hour per week position, so he would still be available for code enforcement issues and chicken enforcement and other assorted things. Um, lately, he's been doing a lot of work, uh, investigating vandalism in our town and, uh, and coordinating, hopefully, uh, a storefront operation for the sheriff at the windmill market. Uh, the mayor's been helping with that, too. So, uh, in finance, we have, uh, Wendy on the line today. If we have detailed questions about our budget, Wendy and I work together, our CPA, uh, from the finance side. We have administrative services, uh, supported by, uh, by Trish, our administrative services manager, and by, uh, Carmen, our accounts receivable clerk. She's the one that everyone knows paying, uh, the library, uh, the, uh, the water bills. She's, she's the one that tracks that program for us and uses that software. Uh, in the library, we have, uh, we have, uh, 20 hours of our current librarian, Rochelle, and then Rochelle is helping us for 10 hours over on the administrative side with the social media, the PIO, the Public Information Officer, and, uh, and also helping us with, uh, QuickBooks and Accounts Payable. So Rochelle has become quite a versatile employee for us and, uh, and, uh, expanding her, her roles and responsibilities. She's moving into, also into the parks and helping with the Luck Park and the Franklin Park development. So that's been very helpful. And then, um, we have the engineer and city engineer in Julie Bazad that hasn't changed. So that's, that's the gist of our organization, and I, and I, and I work towards getting the, oh, pardon me, I overlooked the whole public works crew. This is Nick and his crew here, I'm sorry. Sorry, Nick, I know you're on vacation. Take advantage of that. Um, our crew is, is meant to be versatile, um, although we do have, uh, maintenance workers who specialize in water and wastewater, uh, they're all to contribute to our street improvements and to our parks, uh, and, and buildings. So we're trying to, uh, uh, more generalize our, our public works crew so that they can work in all the different fields and spend, uh, time equally. We did an actual time study, Wendy did, a time study of where our public works crew is spending their time, and we need to focus more time on our streets. We're spending, uh, almost twice as much time on our building and grounds as we are in our streets, and I think the grass is greener, but the potholes are deeper, so...
That was good.
So, so I'm looking at, at, uh, at balancing that out a little bit, and we just did Nick's first evaluation since he's been here. Um, I think he's done a good job of keeping his team together. We have the same exact team, uh, as we had when we started. I know that's one thing Sasar said to me, uh, when I first met him, is we need teamwork, and I think, uh, Nick has helped us achieve that. So, um, I'm fairly happy with the way that's working and not recommending any changes there. Um, we, we developed our strategic plan, so, so that's available for folks to see. We'll update that again this year, and it may be different given COVID, but we had these, uh, these goals in mind. Um, and partnerships is what sticks in my mind. I spent a good, uh, two hours today with the new RMA director, Benny Young. I worked with Benny in Monterey County, um, almost on a weekly basis in city public works. So Benny and I go way back. I'm so glad that, that, uh, the county chose him as their new director. He's a great guy to work with. He's going to help us get our wastewater to Hollister down the county streets, and he's going to help us coordinate so that they're not patching streets at the same time we want to, uh, tear them up. So that's the kind of partnerships that we're working with. Um, I noticed that, uh, the superintendent of the state park system has retired, so that's a new partnership we need to work with, with the state parks next door. Uh, it's just a, a great example of one of the strategies the council set forth in February that I've been following up and trying to make sure that, that we live, live through. So, um, preserving and protecting, promoting our community assets, that's been a real challenge in COVID. Um, we're doing the best we can. The HRB has worked hard on design guidelines for our parklets. We have to make sure that our business owners are following those guidelines, and, you know, that's just one of those constant things that we have to stay on top of, and that's what Liz Turner, our community liaison, has been so helpful in doing. I think we're all aware of the work and time she's put in trying to preserve, protect, and promote our assets and economic vitality. So she's been a big help in helping us reach those strategic goals. Um, invest in maintaining, uh, our vital infrastructure. We spent a lot of time on water and wastewater and master plans, and they outline our priorities for us, so I'll cover some of those in the CIP. Um, promoting our public amenities, of, of all the things in our government, uh, services budget, uh, that, that I can recommend the strongest is the continued support for the San Juan Committee and their promotion of our community, uh, to audiences in Santa Clara County and in Monterey County, and of course, working on our quality of life, which again is, are those, uh, are those building and grounds and, and traffic and, and truck traffic and, and other issues that, that can eat away at our quality of life. So those are some of the strategic plan initiatives that we developed in February that are now here in our budget. Um, the personnel changes, I touched on a little bit with the organizational chart, and that was, uh, a conversion of, uh, part-time community liaison to full-time and, um, uh, expanding the, the role of our part-time library, uh, library lead tech, Rochelle, uh, from 20 to 30 hours, so she can help with our finances and our IT and, and, uh, and also then expanding, expanding the, uh, the code enforcement officer into more of a, there's an economic development conversation there, and then, and then, uh, the code enforcement job description changing to, uh, the public safety. So, um, I know this is something the council was interested in, and I owe you job descriptions. I've been working on them this week, but I didn't have them completed in time for tonight, so I will get you job descriptions in good time and, and recommend them for adoption with the budget, uh, on the 17th, which is only 10 days from now, so... So there's always work to do. It's all good, it's all good. Fun summaries, um, is a great place to stop and shop. Um, the general fund, as I described in my narrative, you can go to this page now and, and look up the, the general fund, and this chart in particular is really good. It talks, this is what I was talking about, getting back to this 1819 budget. So our 1819 budget is here, and we were on, you can see how the green line was expanding up towards 2 million, and then the green line came back down to 1.8. So we're, we're right at this 1819 level right now, and I'm just hoping that we can preserve it. Um, the blue line are the expenses, and you can see how we reduced our expenses last fiscal year by 10%. That's why, that's why there's little gray at the top there, because we came in well under budget with the adjustments we made in April. And basically, you can see here in way of expenses, I'm recommending the same level of services that we had, uh, July 1, uh, June 30 and, and for July 1. So, so that's, um, our general fund in a nutshell. Um, because of the savings in these prior years, we still have a really healthy, uh, general fund reserve, and we've been able to add to that with a little bit of savings that we had from last year. So, um, like I said, we're, we're holding our own in these, in these tough times, and I'm just really happy that we can do that and happy for Wendy's leadership and familiarity with what we're doing. This shows where our general fund comes from. We do rely on property taxes, but it's the sales tax and the transit occupancy tax, um, that, that took the biggest hit. Obviously, the tourism is down, the restaurant capacity is down. Our number one sales tax, however, is, uh, the Windmill followed by Valero, um, and then third on that list is Hardinas Restaurant. Um, and so that's an interesting, uh, way to look at our sales tax, um, but that's why it, it's been as durable as it has been. We thought it would be close to a 90% loss in April, and it turned out to be only a 54% loss, but that's still half of our sales tax. So what are we spending our money on? Uh, 615 of that general fund is going to public safety. That's mostly police and fire and Level 1, and Level 1 has done a terrific job for the city. Um, when we did our, uh, public, uh, survey, um, it was so great to hear that, that, um, the community felt safe, that, that there wasn't, I'm so used to coming from larger cities where, where, you know, safety was the number one issue, and, and really, um, our infrastructure seemed to be a higher issue, which from a guy from public works, that's, that's, that's good, that's, that's what I'm good at, so I'm going to help you with that. Uh, right for now, our, our public works, uh, is second, uh, with finance third, and, and the city manager's budget is higher this year because the economic development, the community liaison position is 100% in the city manager's budget. So it, so it did grow. And I have, uh, one more chart to share with you that, uh, this is by function, again, public safety, 36%. Um, this shows you how our, how our staffing is, this green line here is the same from one year to the next. We're not, we're not increasing staffing. Um, the contractual services is a little bit, uh, pardon me, this is by type. Uh, public safety is the same. I'm sorry, I thought this was staffing, I got ahead of myself. Um, city manager's budget is bigger, that's the red one, because of the addition of the community liaison. And then, um, this is a cool part that I wanted to share with you. This shows our general fund departments on the left, starting with the city council, and it shows the percent change, uh, from one year to the next and the 6% to 7% decrease overall. So we're back down to a $1.6 million budget, and we were up as high as 1.8 million, uh, in the past year. So, uh, the city council is down 15%, and that's mostly travel from conferences and so forth. It's not a very big budget, so when you remove a, a couple thousand dollars for hotels and meals, it has a pretty big impact. City attorney is a reduction that we made in April that we're recommending we continue forward. We cut about $40,000 from our city attorney's budget. Um, the increase in city manager is the, uh, is a full-time position of the, the community liaison. Um, admin service is down just a little bit. Um, we added, we, we kept training, because training costs less, um, but, but we reduced the traveling mileage and, and per diem costs. Um, the city library, of course, uh, hasn't been open, so you see a reduction there of 42, 43%, uh, and that's why we're finding other things for Rochelle to do. Um, she's receiving, uh, people at the library on appointments, um, but it's, but it's been slow, so that's why you see that, that big reduction there. Um, public works is down because of our staff time allocation. They're spending more time directly related to water and sewer, and those are different budgets. So this is our streets budget, and our building and grounds budget's down a little bit, 10%. And then the general government budget is down quite a bit, because in the past, we've used this budget to fund special programs and special projects, like the 150th anniversary. Um, we had the art project, the mandalas, uh, last year. We had some neat projects that we just haven't entertained this year in an effort to, to cut costs, so... So that's, um, that's our general fund. For the most part, that's, uh, the fund transfers are support that we provide for things like community development, the, the planning staff that can't be billed to... community development, the planning staff that can't be billed to private developers and that type of thing. And then the code enforcement will appear in a real way this year. And it shows the $84,000 in COVID expense there, too. And that's, that was really the unbudgeted expense that came. We got wind of a federal reimbursement program where we might be able to recover all of our code enforcement costs from the last calendar year. So that's, that's the basis of our general fund and how it breaks out. And we can go into each department if we want to, or I can just, Mayor, I can just, so these are our, our general fund, community development fund, gas tax. And the water and sewer funds are down towards the bottom. So it's just the basic salaries and supplies. And then each department is outlined in detail. And then we didn't use the ClearGov for capital improvements this year. We just didn't have time to do it right, so we're going to revisit that. We're also going to revisit municipal accounting software to get us off of the QuickBooks habit that we're on right now. We're using a software designed for nonprofits. We really need to get a municipal government software here. So that's really what I wanted to share with you. This is online. I sent the link out to the city council again so that you had access to it. But you go onto our website, and you should be able to find this link and get in and dig around and play around all you want in here. So I just wanted to take a little more time since we're just focused on the budget tonight on the ClearGov. Before I go into the capital improvements, I wonder if anyone has any questions.
So I'll start with Vice Mayor Jordan. Do you have any questions or city manager?
No, not yet.
Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions? Comments? Unmute yourself. You're muted.
Yeah, thank you. No, it was a great presentation. Moving along and so no questions here.
Okay, all right. Councilman Sessa Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. Good report.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeRees, do you have anything to say?
Yes. Don, I missed what you said about windmill aren't getting sales tax. I could hear you clearly.
Oh, I'm sorry, council member. Our top sales tax generators include windmill as our top sales tax generator and Valero is our second biggest sales tax generator. And then it gets into our restaurants, starting with Hardinas.
Okay. And that was your point, I think, that windmill may have been a little, had a little bit of immunity from COVID because they stayed busy?
Exactly, exactly. And the Valero stayed busy as well.
Okay. And then one, one follow-up question on the org chart that you prepared. That looks great, thank you. But are the lines on the org chart notes, like the chain of command or who's responsible for who? Or do all those lines lead up to you?
Yeah, basically, they all, they all stop at my desk. And we're working on that. I hope at mid-year, we can talk about a deputy city manager, community development professional who could help us better manage our planning and HRB and historical preservation efforts. So I think that's, that's what I see as one of the biggest needs in our organization right now. So I hope to revisit that in January.
It just seems like a lot of boxes that have lines up to you, and I just don't want to see you bring it out, buddy.
Well, we've got a great staff, and we've got a great team, and certainly a lot of dedicated folks pitching in. So I've got
Delegate, delegate, delegate.
Got some good help. Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
On the org chart, can you pull up the org chart?
Sure. I can try. Let's see, where is it? It's over here. To share. And then it's on the overview? No, it's on introduction? Introduction? There you go. Okay.
And maybe these aren't in the, in the correct locations yet. I just need clarification on, keep going up or down or whatever. Okay, stop. Okay, so under administrative services?
Oops.
One, two, three, four boxes over, yeah. Then there's the clerk, and then there's the webmaster, social media.
Right, so that's
Was that not?
That's 10 hours of Rochelle's time.
So should that not be under library services?
I'm trying to keep it functional, council member.
Understood, understood.
So I put 20 hours under library for Rochelle, and we've got a little bit of time for part-time help for her so she can take a vacation once in a while.
What?
I know, I know.
Calm down.
She needs some time off before the next election. She's been working her butt off.
Okay, I just, if I can get that in hard copy, just so I can click names to
Sure, sure. No problem, no problem.
And then if we can go to clarification on fund summaries? Yeah, fund summaries?
Uh huh. Did you want to explore some of these other funds?
I don't know what my title was. General fund, maybe?
Okay, that's the one that we spent the most time on, yes?
It was, it was the last, the last thing we were looking at
Okay.
Before we went to questions.
Sure, that's the table?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, it's hitting again.
Oh, that, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Actuals, budgeted, budgeted for 2021, okay. Actuals, you didn't have a percentage on this one because it's like, I don't know, 100%. Go all the way back, go to the bottom, please, for total expend, right there. So code enforcement, we budgeted $66,000?
That is a quirk. Thank you for catching that. We started paying for code enforcement in October is when Rich came on board. So I expected to see six months of expenses there. And so I had that question. If Wendy wants to speak to that, I know she's in on the call. She and I talked about that briefly yesterday or day before. Wendy, can you hear us? Are you, are you still on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great.
So the code enforcement, we're showing $6,700 for FY '20 actuals. It's not a budget number. And we started allocating expenditures to that department mid-year. There may be some reallocations that need to occur before we completely close out the books. But for the current year, we've got a full year of, full burden of code enforcement of $76,000 for the current fiscal year.
Yeah, that was my question, because code enforcement's only 50% of the time.
20 hours, that's the 20 hours of the position.
So we're paying seven, we're budgeting $76,000 for 20 hours?
I'm not hearing
We're budgeting $76,000 for 20 hours? That's fully loaded, right? Wendy, could you hear us?
Yeah, you're slightly muted. Let me turn up my volume. Say that again, please?
The $76,000 is the, is the code enforcement at halftime, right?
No, I think it's code enforcement at full time.
Because that would be, sorry, Wendy, that would be $140,000.
Adding benefits, okay. So we'll have to look more closely at that.
Yeah, let me look at the payroll worksheet. And also, if you just want to click to the right under departments there, Don?
Yeah.
You can show them the detail that goes into the departments. We can bring up code enforcement while I'm looking up the payroll worksheet.
Okay.
Because I want to apply for that position.
Oh, I wouldn't wish that on anyone.
Well, it's, I don't know, five times as much as I'm making now.
It's not just salary, though.
That's what I'm talking about.
But it's more than
It's at 40.
It did?
Up at the, you just passed it a little bit.
Yeah, hold on, I'm bringing up the payroll worksheet right now. Code enforcement, yeah, we, that's at a, oh, that's at 1560, let's see.
So there are equipment, training, and other professional expenses?
That's at three quarters time.
Okay. Okay, and in reality, what my org chart showed was 10% of that time dedicated to law enforcement, but the law enforcement budget doesn't necessarily include that.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, we have a code enforcement, the overall total time of enforcement officer is three quarters hours, so 15, 60 hours per year. Broken out between 75% of that goes to code enforcement and 25% goes to law enforcement or public safety.
And what is, what is law enforcement, public safety?
I can't hear you.
Well, that's, what is law enforcement, public safety? That's the public safety manager role of coordinating the services between the private security and the sheriff's office, working with the sheriff's office to bring statistics and status reports to the council. He's doing investigations on vandalism and other things that happen in the town.
Rich is doing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Enforcement is doing investigations?
Our retired deputy, our public safety manager is helping with investigations.
Hey, Don, do you guys turn down a meeting by yourselves? We can't hear you.
Sorry, I don't know why you can't hear.
So we're using this little, we're using this little speaker and it's not
I'm having a hard time hearing, hearing the city council chamber.
Yeah, we can't hear anything.
You can't hear anything, okay.
I put my mic on.
We can use a chat feature.
Yeah, no, that's not going to work.
Yeah.
Wendy, what's your suffering?
Can, can you hear us now? Can you hear us if we put the microphones closer?
If we speak into the microphones, can you hear?
So we'll look at, treating up the FY '20 actuals, if there's an anomaly there in the allocations. So we have it, so it's more in line with the actual work that was performed. Regarding the FY '21 budgeted number, yeah, those are partial hours. It was not a full-time, this is overall, it's not full-time. It's three quarters time. And of that three quarters time, 75% is allocated to code enforcement, 25% is allocated to public safety.
So did everybody hear that?
And I do have comment on our revenues, if this is the right time, while they're figuring out their, their volume and their sound system at the city hall.
But what I'd like, I want, I want them to be, no.
So I'll make it brief.
Wait, hold on.
You know, in the last, during the summer
She can't hear us.
Don and I attended another meetings with League California Cities along with other organizations, really at a pulse on what was going on with city revenues. Each city being unique in itself and where the revenue streams come from. Our city is heavy on the sales tax and heavy on the TOT tax side. And through our analysis, initially, we were seeing that, we were kind of anticipating a trend of a 64% decrease from prior year. Prior year being, they were good years for you guys. We were, we were kind of, you know, chumming along, doing just great, and then things went downhill. But good news is, is things started looking a little bit better than we anticipated. So we adjusted the budget accordingly, dropping sales tax and the TOT tax down about 54%, being conservative, knowing that we'll take another look at this in January, and then building our budget around those anticipated numbers. So personally, I'm comfortable with your revenue projection as well as your expenditure projections. Once we get in some more of our sales tax deposits and our TOT, I see TOT is starting to look a little bit better, then we'll fine tune things in January for you.
Now, let me ask you a question on that. I read recently where Newsom was giving extensions on businesses turning in sales tax. And if that's true, how will that affect your cash flow for the city?
There'll be a true of it later on. I think it's going to be the end of this fiscal year. The other big revenue stream for us, and we happen to be in a unique situation, is that our property tax revenues, we had all that development this last two years. And so they were anticipating a lag in our property tax revenues because the, the amounts have already been established, the rolls have already been established. The word in League California Cities and other cities is that we would see a drop in our property tax revenues in the next fiscal year, fiscal year thereafter. But because of your development, we pretty much kept it flat. We didn't anticipate, we put a little bit of growth there, maybe not the growth that we would have really expected, but we again want to be real conservative around that. We'll see the number come in in December when we get our first installment and how that plays out. But that wasn't a number we were concerned about at this time, and I don't think we'll be worried about in mid-year either.
That's good. It sounds like playing it as conservatively as you did was a great call since these times are so uncertain. Who knows what the future's going to hold? Going conservative is the way to go. Good job.
That's all I had to share, just a little bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy.
Can you, can you
Can you hear us?
Can we hear us through the chambers?
They can't hear us.
You can't hear us?
Dan, you can't hear us, Dan?
Houston, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear us through the laptop?
There you go, not clear.
Okay, okay, good. We have a speaker that is intended to help, but I think frankly, the battery dies on it occasionally, and it may be dead.
The green light was on, I'm not sure what was going on.
Yeah, so I apologize for that. It has been intermittent at best, so. But you can hear us through the laptop's microphone, okay?
Pub, 10 times better.
Oh, that's good.
Can you hear all of us?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I did better.
All right, good, all right.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Thank you. All right.
All right.
So, okay, Councilman DeRees, you had your questions answered.
Madam Mayor, let me just throw one up. Don, were you able to hear the presentation that Wendy just made on revenue?
Yes.
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 She did a really nice job of kind of walking us through some of the different revenue challenges. So I just wanted to make sure you can hear that.
Yeah, I can hear that. I put the general fund revenue up on the, up on the slide, hopefully.
I figured you were listening because I saw you.
Okay, Randy. So, okay, so we're, we're good with the questions?
Leslie, is it okay?
Leslie?
Did we finish?
Vice Mayor?
I have no idea where I even was.
You were talking about code enforcement salaries and how you were going to apply for the job.
That's exactly correct. Oh, yeah, all of us missed that. I was applying for the job for code enforcement.
Yes.
No, but did you get your question answered?
I do not recall if I did or not. Thank you for asking. I don't know where we left off or where I was.
Okay.
Let's revisit that.
And I'll, I'll, I'll bring up, as soon as I get names associated with the org chart and where, who goes where, I can talk, I can speak better to code enforcement and public safety.
Okay, that's, that's easy to do. I didn't want to put the names on the, on the slide.
Absolutely, I get that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we did answer the question, this, this is not 100% salary, right? It's about 60, it's, it's a lot of salary.
Yeah, I get the
Okay.
Okay. Now, I do have a question, just one quick question.
How about it?
You mentioned city manager and the liaison
Right.
Position. Are they, are they connected somehow, or can you explain that again?
Oh, good question.
I simply budgeted, I asked Wendy to put the, the position in the city manager's budget. So when you look at the detail for the city manager, you're going to say, oh, my gosh, the So when you look at the detail for the city manager, you're going to say, oh, my gosh, the city manager gave himself a huge raise.
Oh, I see. But do you designate in the chart what is?
I don't distinguish, so I can show you the cost for that. I think we have, do we have prior year, Wendy? Do we have the, see, the city manager's salary is budgeted to water and sewer and to all these different things, so in the past, it was like point two-five positions. And so now it's one point two-five positions, so it's a hundred percent of the community liaison plus, plus a portion of my salary. So here you can see employee salary and wages, how it's gone up. So that, that's why the budget has increased, because the employee salaries have increased in this budget. So that's, that's the difference.
So what is her budget?
The, the budget for that position.
Wendy, do you have the total cost for the community liaison?
Because we don't have names.
All right.
So the gross wages for community liaison is, let's see, fifty-four thousand oh eight oh, and with full burden, it's seventy-two thousand nine thirty-eight.
With the full what, Wendy? What'd you say there?
With full burden, meaning benefits, employment taxes, workers' comp. It comes as seventy-two, almost seventy-three thousand.
What, what's the?
Correct. And the city manager goes to ten different departments evenly, so that's why you won't see a hundred percent of the city managers full burden in the city manager budget, because city manager is all over the place. Right, Don?
At least, when he gets out of his office. So if you add, so if you add the seventy-three thousand to the thirty-six, you can see us getting close to a hundred and four. See how that? See employee salary, employee salary right, right in here. So if you add the thirty-six plus the seventy-three thousand dollar number she just gave us, you're going to get real close to that one oh four.
One oh four, okay.
But also, I want to, I need to clarify that, because you have other city personnel that feed into the city manager budget as well, like the city clerk. Ten percent of city clerk's time goes into the city manager budget. So there's other allocations that feed the city manager.
Okay.
But the majority, the big, the big chunk would be the ex.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Does she, can you hear me?
Yes, she said you're welcome. She said you're welcome, so that's a good thing.
Mary, Mary, may I ask the same question that you just asked about community liaison towards the position? I don't even know if it's called the one called Marty Brown, what the cost of that is per year?
That was, that's a project manager position, like Carl Majorkey's position, so it's fifty dollars an hour at twenty hours a week. She hasn't been working that much time. And I don't know how much longer she'll be able to help us. We were talking about her maybe moving north. She's been applying for other jobs, so, so she is helping us get some grants started, but most recent conversations with, with her is frankly, it's not what she thought it would be. She wants to be a city manager. She, yeah, so she's, we've had some heart-to-heart conversations. She's been a big help. But it's a provisional appointment, and I think it may be ending at the first of the year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which, which is why I wanted to revisit the community development function altogether and see if we couldn't afford a full-time position there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we have a part-time in the org chart. Under community development, there's a part-time position there.
All right.
All right.
So, where are we?
Did you have other questions, Mayor?
Are there any other, I, I'm all good. That was the only question.
Would you like to apply for the city manager job?
No.
Community development is a-
It's under, it's under fund summaries, I think, right?
I was just looking at the org chart. That's, that's a half-time.
That's Marty's position. That's the position Councilmember DeVries asked about.
Just asked about.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, let's see, I'll go through everybody else. Can you guys hear me? Oh, Lord.
Yes.
Okay, good. Councilman Freeman, do you, do you now have any questions, comments?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation on the code enforcement, but no questions.
Okay, good. Councilman Flores?
Questions?
Okay. I know, well, we're trying hard, sorry. I'll, I'll try and raise my voice, okay, because the mic is clear over, almost on six feet away.
Six feet away.
Six feet away from me. Okay, so, and Dan, you're okay, right?
Yeah, I'm fine. I just want to reiterate a point I was thinking of since I said it, Don, which is that to have every single person on that org chart report directly to you, that just sounds so stressful for me. And I wonder, this is just a rhetorical comment, I wonder if there'd be any utility into breaking up all of those boxes into like three or four departments, broadly defined, broadly construed, have there be a department head above each one, and then the underlings underneath that department head report to the head, and then the head reports to you. Otherwise, you having thirty boxes report to you directly, buddy, I don't know, man, that sounds, like I said, it just sounds so stressful. But I'll leave that to you. I'm going to be gone in a month and a half here, so. That's just an observational comment, Marty.
It's good therapy for my attention deficit disorder.
You'll never be bored.
You know, Marty is, is a city manager, and that's the first thing she said to me. She said, you need a deputy city manager. Ed Tuohy's recommended that as well, to put someone between myself. I mean, just, the mayor and I walked downtown today, and we got so much accomplished, but I needed to be up here writing staff reports for HRB and other things, and so it's hard to be everywhere at once. I really appreciate your sentiments, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, and Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have any final thoughts or questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, look, there's everybody. Okay.
So I'm going to bounce to the, the capital improvement program real fast. It's ten after twelve.
Ten after twelve?
Here.
I hope not. Oh, my word. Oh.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for allowing me to share the ClearGov with you. Neat stuff. So our capital improvement plan, three point six million dollars. A million of that three point six is dedicated to water and sewer, so almost a third. Six hundred thousand of that is grant money. We're fortunate to get grant money. That we're doing a lot of different things with, an active transportation plan, a trail system, is two hundred thousand of that six hundred. We've got a lot of community development, HCD, money coming in. We're able to keep the general fund's contribution to three point five percent of our CIP. I'm recommending fifty thousand to support that restroom in Rudy Park. Believe it or not, we're moving forward with, with the recommendation there. Fifty thousand dollars for the Sphere of Influence Urban Growth Boundary Study. We have a twenty-two thousand dollar contract with Harris and Associates now. And then twenty-five thousand dollars is a match for the, the trail system program that we have going on, so it's a ten percent match of that two hundred thousand dollar grant. So we've added about nineteen new projects, and they're shown on the spreadsheet that I've provided as twenty-one, so the projects with the twenty-one dash thirteen, all the way through, through twenty-one dash twenty-one. Those are our new projects this year. We're including equipment for our public works crew. A lot of it is safety-related, to make sure that our crew has the right equipment, so that they're out there performing their job safely and efficiently. There are water and sewer immediate needs that are addressed in this, contractual obligations, as we discussed. San Juan Hollister Road, the sewer line and the listation there that need to be done, so that we can function and flush out our, our water treatment plant. And there are no new street projects indicated in the budget. We are just now actually wrapping up our, our third street project, so that is technically in two fiscal years. Once we're done with the third street project, though, I think Julie has done an excellent job managing that contract, and it looks like we'll be able to save our contingency fund, which is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So at mid-year, I would like to look at the pavement management plan, and the same is true, looking at water and sewer projects in our, in our master plans for water and sewer, and see if we can afford any of the, of the priorities that are listed there. So in my budget message, I did show, the city engineer provided us with a list of priorities for our pavement management plan, and you'll see, it's only a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to address some of the deficiencies on Franklin Street, North Street, Second Street, Villa Padre, the Alameda, Monterey Street, and more work, crack and sealing on, on the Alameda near Highway fifty-six, one fifty-six. So that's a lot of ground to cover with not a whole lot of money, and that's great. That's, it's almost equal to our Measure G allotment, so we should, I think we can afford that after the first of the year, and I, and I hope we can tackle some of the pavement management plan projects this fiscal year, but maybe after, after February, March, like that. So, and just, so that, that would be great. I think we're heading in that direction. On the water side, these are pipes that need to be replaced, priority one, two, and three. They're on First Street and, and the third one on, on San Jose Street. And I've been thinking, Councilmember Jordan, about the idea of when we, when we work on a street, that we take care of the infrastructure below it. What these plans are talking about are, we want to make sure that they're not too siloed, right? That the water plan is functioning with the pavement management plan, not opposite. So we'll keep that in mind as, as we look at these projects. It does cause the cost of a single project to be a lot higher.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if, if we can slowly seal a street and, and leave the pipes alone.
Yeah, I know.
So it's a trade-off. There's trade-offs.
Yeah.
So with that, we have a number of special studies. These are some of the grants that we're working on. In special studies, we have the, the trail plan, the active transportation plan that I talked about, the, the grant from Caltrans. We also have the SB two grants that we're working on, looking at, when the Sphere of Influence lines are drawn and the commitment is made, we'll look at a specific plan along the Alameda, south of one fifty-six. The LEAP grant, the local, local policy grant from HCD is intended to encourage us to look at our housing policies, so we're looking at our inclusionary housing policy and our ADUs. So that's sixty thousand dollars to come up with design standards for accessory dwelling units and, and for improving and increasing our, our inclusionary housing loss before the next development comes along, right? And then the REAP grant has just come through COG. Councilmember Freeman has been a little bit involved with that. It's not a whole lot of money. Maybe it can be used to pay for someone like Marty Brown to implement these other grant programs. So that's, that's in a nutshell, the extent of our studies that we have in our capital improvement plan. I put them in the CIP because they will last more than one calendar year, so it helps us track the money and keep it from one fiscal year to the next. Now, this is a really busy slide, but I didn't want to leave the capital improvement plan without talking about our compliance projects for water and wastewater. And so on the left-hand column, I've, I've put the cost amounts. This is a slide from when we selected our compliance projects. So to build a pipeline from West Hill's water treatment plant to the city, the construction costs only about five point two million dollars. The wastewater construction cost to run a pipe from San Juan Batista to Hollister is estimated in this report to be almost eleven million dollars. And I just wanted to let the council know that, that we are actively pursuing a USDA grant. We have a third conference call with them next week. They asked me if we had slept at our projects in a public forum, and we had, and they came back to me and said, did you advertise in the newspaper? And I said, we don't have a newspaper. So, you know, these are federal programs, and so there's a little bit of work that goes on to making them happy and jumping through all their hoops. So don't be surprised if we have another public meeting on water, just to, just so they can check the box, if you know what I mean.
Did you say anything about it in the Village Voice? Would that not constitute a newspaper?
A newspaper?
They want a public hearing notice published in a newspaper with an affidavit that says we published it.
Oh.
So, maybe-
With the, with the freelance?
So, I, I don't know. I, it's going to have to be.
It's got to be a newspaper that's been adjudicated as a newspaper in general circulation.
Thank you.
To be adjudicated like that, you have to file some paperwork at the courthouse. The freelance for sure does that. That's what allows them to post all governmental notices.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because it's been around forever.
So, so, yeah, and so we hadn't applied for this grant when we were doing the, the public meeting, so just, I'm just giving an example of some of the hoops you have to jump through, and we're already jumping through them for the USDA. That's a grant and a loan program. The application to the state revolving loan fund for water projects is due the end of the calendar year, and Carl's been working on that lately. And we're going to be exploring opportunities with private financing, because waiting till June twenty twenty-two for some of these state and federal funds to become available means that the cost of our project will cost more. It'll cost two years of inflation more than if we could secure private financing now and move forward. So, so we're going to evaluate all the different options and bring those projects back to you with their own budgets. That's the point of this slide, is to say that we're developing a pro forma with all the different resources, our partnership with the San Benidino Water District. Our water committee today met for an hour to, to look at the agreement that they're proposing and, and how the city would be paying for that, and I think we had a really productive meeting with John and Leslie, and we're ready to meet with them and their board on the nineteenth to take the discussion to another level. So, so I didn't want the CIP to go, pass this workshop without considering the work that we're doing on these plans and creating a funding plan, financing plan is, is one of my biggest priorities right now, so, so just so that you know that. And then our budget schedule, Wendy, we're going to be looking at our mid-year review in a couple months, in January nineteenth. So we'll get some sleep.
I saw that. I was very, very excited to see that, and the audit's in here.
Yeah, so when you have time, in the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of days?
We're going to get your audit done first. I've been corresponding with your auditor this, this afternoon, and we've got a plan to, to meet that deadline. And then we'll move into the next round of budget.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. So if the council or the public has any comments on the capital improvements, I'm happy to go over that in more detail. I can bring up this whole spreadsheet and then share my screen with the spreadsheet if that's helpful.
So I'll start with Councilman Flores. Do you have any questions? Can you hear me?
No questions.
No questions, okay. Councilman Freeman, do you have?
I just have a comment. It looks like some of the, some of the costs will be sorted by the water district, and we'll be able to marginalize those over forty years. I'm, I'm looking to get some of the projects going sooner than later, and I think that'll be a good thing, because it'll help get the state water board and EPA off our backs, and that will be a huge savings to the city.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeVries?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Don, can you go back to the trail plan? The trail plan, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I thought that was a typo, unless we're going to get like a ski lift to the top of the Anza Trail or something? Which I would vote for. Then you don't have to, then you don't have to hike all the way up. You can just take the lift and then walk down.
Right, right, so Caltrans offers an annual competitive grant process that we worked on with the local government commission, and some of you were able to attend their conference in Yosemite, and they're all about sustainable, walkable communities. And so when we got back and we were looking, considering this grant application, was the same time that the master plan from the Strategic Planning Committee was shared with me, and they were proposing a cultural trail that connected all the different assets in the city together. So it looped in the Deanza Trail, it looped in all of our parks and the Mission, and, and just creates one big walking, active, mobility bicycle path around and through the whole city. So that's a whole community engagement process. There's a whole, there's a whole process wrapped around that. And with that plan, you can take that plan to the bank and, and apply for ATP funds, it's called, Active Transportation Plan Funds. So believe it or not, that two fifty doesn't even build the, the trail, Dan. It, it builds the plan, so that you can get the money to build the trail.
Is that right? So it's, it's two fifty for planning purposes only? No construction?
Yeah, it's heavily- Yeah, it's heavily weighted on community input.
Wow. And then do we, we, do we bring in a consultant to lead the charge on that, to be in charge of that money?
Yes, the, the local government commission is our partner there, right. And, and, and if you don't know the local government commission, they are a nonprofit, um, that is in Sacramento, and, um, it's head by, by city council members and, and county board of supervisors. That's what their board is comprised of, and they're working on, uh, energy efficiency, they're working on, um, any, anything to do with sustainable, uh, livelihoods. And so, so that's where, uh, the local government commission comes in as a good partner, and I knew them from my past work in Salinas, and they partnered up with me right away, and, and we were able to get this grant. So, um, it'll be great. It'll, I think it'll be a good community conversation. It'll work well with the Luck Park master plan work that we're doing and help to connect those assets. But it's kinda complicated, cause you've gotta get that trail back and forth across Caltrans property. You've gotta get the trail maybe along the San Andreas Fault, around the school district, so, and the Mission and, and the El Comino Real, and so it's, it's crossing a lot of different jurisdictions, and there's some complications there. Um, so, yeah, I'll, I'll bring it back in full, in full, uh, in full glory and share it in more detail with the council. Happy to.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll talk to you more about that, uh, in person, Don, cause that sounds fascinating to me. It sounds like an amazing opportunity. I'll learn more about it.
Sure, be happy to.
Okay, all right.
Comment from Carl.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Vice Mayor Jordan, do you have?
I, I don't have anything. There are two chats, though.
Oh, dear. Okay, you wanna read them, or?
I can.
Okay.
Rochelle from, says that the library is open for appointment Monday and Thursday, twelve to four, and Wednesday, ten to four. The library is closed through November fifteenth, so that Rochelle can quarantine post-election. Uh, she worked at the registrar's office for voters Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. Uh, she also posted, if all y'all can see that, can you bring up the chats? Uh, the, the link to ClearGov. Uh, Cara Vonk says, we already have a bicycle trail plan through C O B. Uh, again, studies and plans only, uh, goes under Washington Street, C O G, not C O B.
Yeah, COG, yeah. Okay, thanks, Cara, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Cara.
So, um, uh, can you scroll down a tad to get the, or scroll up a tad, so we can get Rochelle's?
Oh, okay, all right.
So, that's the, uh, link to ClearGov, if anybody wants to get on that?
That's a lot.
You can copy it into your...
And, and Rochelle, we'll, we'll work on putting that back on the front page. Maybe the C I P and the operations budget could be a single link instead of two, and that would make room for this link, uh, to be on the front page again of our, of our website, so it's easy to find.
Okay, good. Okay. Anything else? Um, anybody else, public comment?
Nope, I have nothing else.
All right, good. Um, so now, um, was that your whole presentation, Mr. City Manager?
I'm done.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
That's the operative word, not finished.
Good, good job. Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of City Council and public. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so now we go forward, and, uh, we'll go to item four A, approved affidavit of posting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the affidavit of posting the agenda.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Ask him then. Wait, John, let me second it. I don't have very many more left.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Okay.
Okay, so I have Councilmember Flores for vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, does anybody else have anything they wanna say before we adjourn?